Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kern Community College District Board and Trustees. The board will reconvene in that open session. This time I'd like to ask Jennifer to please call the board.
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. A sufficient number of members present accorded was established. We'll continue on with our agenda. And our next item is B, Budget Allegiance. At this time, I'd like to ask our student trustee, Yonah Jimenez, to lead us into the play. Thank you, Student Trustee Guzman. Next item is C, Report of Actions Taken in Closed Session. There are no items to report out at this time. So that brings us to the public comment portion of the meeting. At this time, the public may address the Board of Trustees on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board that is not on the agenda. Public may address the Board of Trustees on each of the agenda items as those items are considered. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of five minutes per topic. Twenty minutes shall be the maximum time allotted for public speakers on any one subject, regardless of the number of speakers at any one board meeting. At the discretion of a majority of the board, these times may be extended. Each person who addresses the board must first be recognized by the presiding officer. Comments must be addressed. The comments must be addressed to the board as a whole and not to individual members or district employees. The board and staff are not obligated to comment on, or respond to, or address comments by the public. At the opening of this meeting, names and agenda items were taken for public comments. And are there any additional members who wish to speak? Submit a form now. Okay, if not, we'll go down the list. Our first speaker is Russell Pearson.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
My name is Russ Person. I'm the parent of a student at Bakersfield College. I read one of the charges against Dr. Garrett. I'm speaking towards the day. And it says he was uncollegial in his interaction with Nikki Domenia. Uh, Domenia claimed that Garrett was hostile and uncollegial. In fact, I was there at the meeting. And I sat next to Dr. Garrett. And I saw the entire interaction. And what Domenia said simply did not happen. Garrett never stepped in front of Domenia. Nor did he, in my opinion, sound hostile. Your administration is exaggerating a mild respectful interaction into some sort of hostile aggression. That never happened. I was there. I saw it. I heard it. This makes me wonder how many more of the charges against Garrett are exaggerated or outright fabricated. The federal judge said that you were likely imposing inconsistent standards of collegiality to target faculty. And I've seen it firsthand. Your administration is not telling the truth. Dr. Garrett was perfectly collegial in that interaction with Domenia. As a witness, I've been subpoenaed. And I will be testifying to the truth in court. But you have a chance now to fix the problem before it goes to court. I'm telling you that I was there. I saw it. I heard it. And your administration is not telling you the truth. I ask you to drop the charges and save us all the heartache and the millions in legal costs. Return Dr. Garrett to the classroom. He was the best professor my son has had in Bakersfield College. And he's a very even-mannered man. And he would be such an asset to the students at the college.
Thank you. Next speaker, Matthew Garrett.
The ancient Greek tragedy, Antigone, tells of two brothers who died in a bloody civil war to control the kingdom. And then were succeeded by their uncle Creon. Though the war was over, Creon took sides in the matter and declared one nephew a hero and the other a traitor. In a bold act of defiance, Antigone buried her dead traitor brother, and Creon had her sealed in a cave to die. In this context, the blind prophet gave wise counsel to King Creo. He noted that the war was over and to punish Antigone served no purpose but to anger his citizenry and perpetuate a past conflict that is better put to rest. He said, and I quote, "All men make mistakes, but a good man yields when he knows his course is wrong and repairs the evil. The only crime is pride." Today, I'd like to offer you that same advice. By now, it is painfully obvious that you made a mistake. Numerous journalists have exposed that your administration lied to you. Months ago, The Californian published the revelation that I never actually accused anyone of fraud, despite your administration's publicly punishing me for that allegation. National media uncovered that the diversity committee recording showed that the accusers lied about me. And the dean in attendance knew it when he affirmed those lies. A federal magistrate judge has now issued a proclamation that you are likely violating First Amendment rights and Fourteenth Amendment rights. And though no court has yet approached it, you're also violating my whistleblower rights. The former chancellor who caused this debacle has moved on. And you cannot hope to prevail in court. There is no value in dragging this out. It only serves to antagonize your constituents and expose yourselves to greater liability. You were lied to by your administration. And everyone sees it. The media sees it. The federal court sees it. The community sees it. The latest KCCD climate survey shows that the faculty and staff see it too. At Bakersfield College, trust between faculty and management has plummeted under the prior chancellor's administration from fifty-nine percent to forty-seven percent to thirty-five percent. We all see it. And I suspect that your hiring of outside candidates for chancellor and B.C. president means that you see it too. Now, I can't stop you from making this process painful for me and my family. You have driven me onto welfare. You've robbed my children of Christmas. You've taken food out of their mouths. And it's true that you can make me suffer more. But I am unbreakable. And in the end, you will lose. And the longer this drags out, the greater the cost for the taxpayers. At this point, you are on the hook for at least a few million dollars for retaliation, defamation, and legal fees. That is unavoidable now. But if you continue on this path, you could very easily double or triple that expense. Oberlin College recently exhausted all of its appeals on a very similar case. And now they must pay thirty-three million dollars in punitive damages, plus millions more in legal fees. Also, if this continues, you will very possibly lose qualified immunity because you have violated my civil rights. That means you will be open to costly, personal litigation. You have become the Grinch who stole Christmas from my children. But in the end, it is the Kern County taxpayers who will be robbed. Is that really what you want to do? Again, the prophet's wise counsel read, "All men make mistakes, but good men yields when he knows his course is wrong and repairs the evil. The only crime is pride." I think by now, you know that you were misled. I ask you to set aside your pride and be the good men and women that I still hope you are. Drop the charges. Return me to the classroom. Pay your damages, and let's fix the campus together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dennis McLean. Next speaker, Dennis McLean.
Good afternoon. I'm here today to express my opposition to the recent anti-racist guidelines being forced on conservative faculty members. This administrative decision is a clear violation of fundamental First Amendment rights. Your board is being sued by individuals who do not support this assault on the Fourteenth Amendment. You are wasting huge sums of money, taxpayer money, for legal suit fees on faculty First Amendment suits. That I find absurd.
Thank you. Next speaker, Terry Maxwell.
Good afternoon. Want to congratulate the new chancellor. Is he here? Not yet, huh? Want to congratulate you on your decision on the new chancellor. Uh, in reading what I read in the paper, it seemed like a outstanding individual that is going to bring a little bit of salient focus for the, for the campuses here in Kern County. Uh, I see that he isn't embroiled in things like DEIA, that he is going to get back to making sure that everything that happens on the campus is towards the betterment for the staff as well as for the students. Uh, that he's not going to embroil himself in that kind of thing. At least that was the impression that I got. Hopefully, that was some of the criteria that you hired him by. Was that, uh, we really do need to to, uh, have someone that is going to teach our students to be uh, graduates that can go on to work for good companies, that that's what the focus should be. But, uh, I also know that, uh, the, the recent decision by the Supreme Court, um, made some guidelines on that DEI question and that which you're supposed to evaluate your teachers and your admissions by. And that the State Center for the Community College District has made a appeal to, uh, just about everybody to to adopt a res- a joint resolution between the community college CEOs and the trustees, denouncing the Supreme Court decision. That concerns me. They had a resolution and, uh, they also had, uh, a lot of their fours and, uh, uh, one of them was to resolve that you would, as a state commit- State Center for the Community Colleges, Board of Trustees shall call on all administrative faculty, staff, and staff relative to promote racial equality and equity protection through anti-racial work at the structure, culture, and individual levels in areas such as curriculum, teaching, uh, pedagogy, androgogy, student services, um, remedial education reform, focus outreach, um, et cetera. And then, uh, it's a they do mention, uh, enrollment also. It's an appeal to you to ignore things. And I thought, well, now, who's on this board? Who would, who would go against what the Supreme Court has had to say? And I looked to see who's on the Community College League of California. Nan Gomez-Hightsburg is. And then I thought, well, who's on the Community College Trustees Board? Nan Gomez-Hightsburg is. And then I thought, well, now, does she hold any other positions? So I looked at the the, uh, release of statistics and information, and it seems that on October eighteenth, five trustees were elected to the national board. And, uh, the Pacific Regional Chair is Nan Gomez-Hightsburg. Now, I would ask you, the most liberal representative on this board, does she really represent a conservative area like Kern County? She's involved in this assertion that we should ignore the Supreme Court and that you should go ahead with all your DEI. What, what's a nice word to use for it? There isn't one, never mind. This is, this is not a good representation. I don't know if it's, this is the board that put her up into that position, or it's elected in a different way. But I would question your decision to take, as I say, the most liberal member of this group that is going to be in favor of these sort of things and have that person be representative up there. And I would ask this board, as long as you're going to be changing the, the, uh, the makeup of your elected positions, that that one is really up on the top of the list as far as I'm concerned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. Any other speakers? Hearing or seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to six organizational items, letter A. Kern Community College District Board of Trustees, election of officers, and other trustee representatives.
To give that re- nomination committee met on Thursday, November thirtieth, twenty-three. The Kern trustee nomination officer. Including president, vice president, for trustee representative. And trustee representative. Nomination period was opened on Thursday night and closed on Friday. I'd like to offer a motion, uh, the plate would be President of the Board John Corkins, Vice President of the Board Nan Gomez-Hightsburg, and Court Board would be Yovani.
There's a motion on slate of officers. Trustee Meek, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Gomez-Hightsburg. Any discussion or questions on this item? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are none, the motion carries?
Next item is the KCCD trustee representative, Bakersfield College Foundation, and the recommendation and the KCCD trustee representative to the Kern County organization, Kyle Carter. I would offer that.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Beak seconded by trustee Corkins. Any discussion or questions on the item? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you, trustee Meek. Next item, seven. State legislative update and discussion.
Yeah.
Oh, you have six B. Oh, I'm sorry. Six B. I apologize. Got ahead of myself here. Uh, six B is approval of proposed Board of Trustees calendar of meetings for academic year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
Overproof.
There's a motion to approve my trustee Corkins. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Scriber. Any questions or discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That brings us to seven A, State Legislative Update and Discussion.
I guess, Mr. Mark. To, uh, give the presentation.
Thank you, um, trustees, chancellor, for having me down. Mark McDonald, MGI Advocacy. I am your, uh, legislative representative and advocate in Sacramento. And, um, trustee Corkins asked me not to bring bad news, but, um, I'm going to bring a little bit of, uh, mixed, mixed bag this year, I would say. Um, so, just to kind of give you a sense of where we are, the governor will release his January budget proposal on January tenth, and that's going to be a big deal this year, and I'll get into that, a, a bigger deal than normally. Um, and I'll get into that in a little bit. Um, committee hearings on the budget will be February and May. The governor will then reintroduce his updated budget on May fifteenth, which I think is another bigger date than normally this year because we pushed back the tax deadline this year until November. We're not going to have a good sense of what total revenues are for the fiscal years of twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four until May fifteenth. And then the legislature has a constitutional deadline that they have to vote on a budget by June fifteenth. Simultaneously, there will be a legislative process going along. Um, and the legislature comes back on January third. They're on recess right now. Um, and then through March, they will meet, introduce bills. The deadline to introduce bills, um, is the second week in February. Those bills will move through. Um, those that make it to the governor have to make it to the governor by August. Um, and then the governor has a month to sign or veto bills in September. Um, I know that your chancellor has made you very aware of this, but I just wanted to update, um, where we are in the budget situation. Um, last year, there was over an eight percent COLA that was allocated to community college districts. About forty-two percent of that COLA was one-time money. Um, and I know that, that this district, um, acted in a very favorable way, um, recognizing the risks that came with that money being one-time money. Next year, the LAO is estimating that the COLA will be one point two seven percent. So come January tenth and through the budget process, the state is going to have to come up with that two hundred and ninety million in one-time money and backfill that this year and then fund the one point two seven million dollar, or one point two seven percent COLA in the budget year. We did have some success, um, in the past year. I think one of the things that is successful that we're going to see in the next year was the outcome of the Affordable Student Housing Grant. We were able to get the, uh, initially, the budget had the risk shifted to the districts. In the final, um, deal, we were able to get the state to take on the risk. Um, they will be introducing their plan on January tenth, which is another reason that January tenth is a big date this year. And then in a year when there were practically no district-specific allocations, um, mi- uh, Assemblywoman Baines was able to secure one million dollars, um, for this district. Um, and it was, it was a last-minute deal that her staff called up and, and I want to give, um, a shout out to Norma Rojas. I don't know if she's here, but, um, really helped put something together with me in the last minute to get over to her office to get into the budget. Um, so it was a great team effort. Um, the LAO released their, uh, fiscal uh, projections for next year and the overall budget problem that they identify for a three-year period, that's for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five, is sixty-eight billion-dollar problem. I'm sure you've read it in the newspaper. Um, what does that mean for Proposition Ninety-eight? Well, for every dollar that there's an issue on the overall budget, it's about forty cents to Proposition Ninety-eight. And the biggest issue is the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year because that's money that you've already been given, that you've already committed, much of which you've already spent. And Proposition Ninety-eight is down in that year, seven point seven billion dollars. And so for community colleges, if you assume we're about eleven percent of that, that's about seven hundred and seventy to eight hundred million dollars, um, that Prop Ninety-eight is down in money that you've already committed. The LAO is recommending that the state use the Prop Ninety-eight rainy day fund to backfill that so that you aren't trying to claw back money that you've already spent and then make adjustments to the twenty-three, twenty-four, and the twenty-four, twenty-five, um, fiscal years. Now, I think you should bear in mind that LAO's, um, numbers for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five are just projections. So they could come in higher, or they could still come in lower than what the LAO is projecting for those two years. Um, I'm hearing in conversations with the administration that their projections are going to be a little bit better than the LAOs. Um, but as you know, those are just projections. And we'll have a better idea at the May revision as to what those actual receipts will look like. One of the reasons we're in such a bad situation in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget is because they pushed back the tax deadline. So if we had known if tax filings had been in April fifteenth like they normally were, we would have known at the May revision that receipts were down, and we would have been able to adjust the twenty-two, twenty-three budget at that time. And we wouldn't be having this problem that we have now. I'm going to go over a few bills of interest that were signed into law. These are bills that, um, the, uh, your, your district will be, um, seeing in the coming year. Um, AB three sixty-eight, it provides that, um, you can give priority enrollment to high school students in your dual enrollment programs. I'm trying to read that up there, and I think some of the pages are missing. AB three fifty-eight, um, by Addis, this actually, um, was signed into law and on student housing projects, you don't have to, you no longer have to go through the field act with this bill. AB six oh seven, it would require you to provide cost estimates of the course materials for each course in your catalog. Um, AB six five six, this impacts you tangentially, but as we have these discussions of community colleges being able to offer baccalaureate degrees, this bill authorizes CSU to offer doctoral degrees. So as we fight CSU over baccalaureate degrees, CSU is, on the other hand, saying, well, we want to offer doctoral degrees, so, um, just making you aware of that. And then AB seven eight nine, um, makes it easier for students who fall off financial aid for losing satisfactory academic progress to get back on financial aid. AB ten ninety-six would authorize you to offer courses in language other than English. AB twelve ninety-one is a pilot project for the associate degree for transfer with UC. We've had it for UC for a while. This folds UC into the mix over about a five-year period, though. Um, fourteen, AB fourteen hundred Bryant, um, provides financial aid for students that, um, transfer to HBCU colleges and then, um, promise to come back to California after they graduate. And then AB fifteen forty, um, for Fong, streamlines the, um, process by which AB five forty students can access financial aid. So two other, um, big issues that happened in this state this past year, there were two audits. Um, there's an audit that's going to come out on transfer. Um, as you know, we've had the ADT process for a long period of time, but it still precludes some students from getting into the CSU of their choice. Um, so we may be able to take a look at the log jams um, that happen at UC and CSU when our students are transfer-ready because that's really the only thing we can control. And then there's going to be an audit on the fifty percent law. Um, they haven't started that yet. Um, but we're anticipating that when that um, is completed, there may be some action on the fifty percent law. Is completed, there may be some action on the fifty percent law after that audit comes out.
As a side note. Maybe, some of you may recall, we were subject of that audit back in the early two thousands. We did not make that list to be honest.
So issues for twenty twenty-four. Based on, I think my comments on the L A O fiscal forecast. Our top priority is going to be for a COLA and base funding. So if we can get the one-time money that's been committed for a COLA. Converted into ongoing money and get a full COLA for. Twenty-four, twenty-five, I think it would be. A, a big victory this year. If we could fully fund the COLA. I've talked to the chancellor about. Getting some growth money in the budget as well because this district is growing. So I think that's important also in this area. The funding formula is going to be discussed. I think with the. Fiscal projections from the L A O, this is going to be put on hold. The, the funding base kicks in next year. And a lot of districts are still below their hold harmless level. Implementation of the Cal Grant Equity Framework, there was, this was put into the budget last year but was not funded. This would create two Cal Grants, a Cal Grant two for community colleges and a Cal Grant four. For the four-year systems. It would really help community college students a lot. It would make more community college students eligible. And would increase the aid that they get. But I don't see, just quite frankly, this being funded in the next year, given the fiscal situation of the state, so. The can will likely be kicked down the road for this one as well. This one will not be kicked down the road. This, there's two education facilities bonds and. The Kern District has done quite well in pulling down state funds for your educational facilities. And almost all of the state funding has currently been either allocated or committed. There's two bills, A B two forty-seven from Meritsuchi, which is just K twelve and community colleges. And S B twenty-eight from Glazer that also includes C S U and U C. And just to be quite frank, we've been supporting A B two forty-seven. Because when you start to bring in U C and C S U, the amount of money that community college gets starts to get squeezed out. The chancellor and I. Met yesterday with Assemblymember Baines to talk about this issue. There is very likely going to be a bill introduced that would allow community colleges to offer. B S N's, baccalaureate degrees in nursing. The unions are with us this time, whereas they weren't before. There will probably be issues at the C S U level. But it'll start broad and it'll probably get narrowed down. One of the requirements in order to get the baccalaureate in nursing will be that you have an A A in nursing, and I know that. This district does, I believe, at all three colleges, correct? So all three colleges would be eligible. There would be an application process likely through the chancellor's office. But this is going to be the big initiative, I think, for community colleges this year. Doesn't cost a lot of money, so there's not that budget tension. Yet it would help the workforce in our local areas. Additionally, there's sixty million that was put in the budget last year, starting this year. To expand nursing programs, both A A S N. Basically, A A programs. I don't know if this is going to end up being funded because it was just a promise for next year. And now we're in that year and we're obviously seeing a downturn. In our budget figures, so it'll take a lot to get this money, this money in the budget again this year. Credit for prior learning is going to be an initiative by the State Chancellor's Office. Expanding out of military into the workforce and giving students credit for what they've learned. In their, in their everyday lives. So that they don't have to go through and basically relearn what they've already been working in. And then this is something that I touched on is the Affordable Student Housing, and this is. Obviously, a big deal for Kern and Bakersfield College that has a project to be funded. The administration has indicated that they're going to come out with a proposal in January with their January ten budget. There'll likely be some sort of state. Revenue bond that will provide the funding to the local districts to. Construct those housing projects. I think the Department of Finance was hoping that revenues would come in above projections and they'd be able to. Just provide the funding to the, as grants, but that's not looking like it's going to happen. But the Department of Finance has committed to funding through another mechanism, such as revenue bond. And then just one last thing I wanted to, to talk about is the politics of next year. Things are going to shift a little bit. We have a new pro tem. In Senator McGuire. Who's, who's district runs up the North Coast and is a lot more rural. Than downtown San Diego, the previous pro tem Senator Atkins. And then the new Speaker, Robert Rivas. Is in the Watsonville area. Different dramatically than what we saw previously from Speaker Rendon. Who was in downtown Los Angeles. And they've put in place their new budget teams. There's a new appropriations chair who is Assemblymember Wicks from Berkeley. There is yet to be named a new Chair of the Senate Appropriations Committee. But Senator Portantino from the Pasadena, Blendale area. Is running for Congress and is terming out, so that he'll need to be replaced. And the new budget chair on the assembly side is Assemblymember Gabriel, who's from the Los Angeles area. And he replaces Assemblymember Ting, who was from San Francisco. And then for Education Subcommittee. It's no longer. Mister Kevin McCarty, who was from Sacramento, it's now. Assemblymember Alvarez, who's from the San Diego area. So with that, I know there was a lot of information. In a short amount of time, or maybe some of you are thinking a long amount of time, but. Happy to take any questions or comments at this point.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll open up the floor. Any questions, comments from members of the board?
What does it look like for community college support with this new group?
The new, the new.
Chairs.
Of the. Yeah, Assemblymember Wicks, who's in, on the appropriation side. Her, her real issue is housing. She's from the Berkeley Oakland area. But the new. Budget Subcommittee on Education, Assemblymember Alvarez. Is a big fan of community colleges and. He asked the. Consultant of the committee. A couple of weeks ago for a briefing on Proposition ninety-eight. He has done a couple of bills around community colleges. He's from the Chula Vista area. Very close to the president of Southwestern College down there, Mark Sanchez. But he's, he was also a former staffer, if you remember Denise Duchesne. Who was a former community college trustee. So he, he. Community colleges are near and dear to his heart. So I think he will be a friend of ours in that subcommittee.
Yes, I just want to thank you for the report and also highlight. I think it's important we continue to elevate and raise awareness around the fact that the current nursing shortages that we're experiencing. Is, is a downstream problem. Due to the actual challenge, I think, that exists, which is a nursing education. Pinch point for, for a variety of reasons, but I think we need to continue to take the posture that this is, this is a problem that can be solved. And I, I think you are right in pointing out the fact that we are, are working with institutions that are, are looking to. Serve their, their demographic and constituency by providing higher education degrees in. Atypical settings and we need to continue to lean into the idea that, that the waiting lists in our, our nursing schools. The challenges that exist there and our commitment to our communities in the workforce, but specifically post-COVID in healthcare. I think this issue is, is the issue of, of. It may be an overstatement to say, but one of the most important issues of my lifetime to solve at the community college level. And I, I want to see us continue to just really be laser-focused on that and I appreciate your update.
We'll, we'll lean in on that and my line when we were talking has always been our competition for our students isn't the C S U. It's leaving the state or going nowhere because their slots just aren't there for the C S U.
Mark, real quick, do you see any capitulation by legislatures on one-time spending to come back to help balance the budget? Specifically, we see a sixteen point seven billion. Down, downside to Prop ninety-eight coming at us. And I know there's still some one-time funds there, the L A O referenced it, but last time legislators wouldn't give up the one-time funds.
That's a good question. I think what they're going to, the L A O. Is recommending the legislature do, and I think where the legislature is going to be. There's just over eight billion available in the reserve. And I think they're going to try to use that to cover the twenty-two, twenty-three year. And then there's about, that means there would be about four billion. In the current year that would need to be reduced and the legislature has identified. I think about two or three billion in one-time funding that hasn't been used that could be pulled back. And then remember, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget year is just all projection at this point. I mean, there's. So. We'll see, I mean, I think we, we want to make sure we get a COLA in that twenty-four, twenty-five year, but. I, I think. In the current year, you could see some reductions in one-time funding and, and, you know. My job will be to make sure that it's not in the COLA that it gets going.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Let's finish off. Thank you, Mr. McDonald, for your, your presentation just around the topic of nursing. You know, I've heard, I'm not certain if I'm accurate, but. Know that one of the obstacles that we face here in a more rural district is the opportunities here. For students to do clinical hours. And if there's a way, and as you continue conversations with folks at the Capitol to. Take that into consideration, rural communities like ours may not have a lot of opportunities for students to do clinical hours. And if there's another route around the tree they can figure out to help students get those hours done so they can finish and move on, that'd be very helpful. Thank you. We'll move on, next item.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Update on the California Renewable Energy Laboratory, C R E L.
Good afternoon, trustees. Thank you for allowing us to share the exciting work of the district's California Renewable Energy Lab. As my colleagues are joining us at the table, I have a. I prepared a brief statement and the interest of time, I'm going to read it so that I don't wander off script. I've been warned about that today morning. For more than ten years, as you all know, Kern Community College District has been focused. On renewable energy strategies through our Twenty-First Century Energy Center. Which provides training in new and emerging energy technologies. But with a renewed eye to the future and a priority of ensuring that we are creating the workforce for the future. Our district recognized the need to develop bold and innovative strategies so that we could be leaders. In meeting the ambitious climate goals that are set by the state. Leadership required action. We created intentional partnerships with the national laboratories, industry. Community and labor agencies and started the California Renewable Energy Laboratory. After a series of meetings, we began a partnership with the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. And established a satellite at Kern Community College District. Last year, through significant and collective advocacy, the vision became reality. Through a fifty-million-dollar grant from the state, allowing us to expand our focus on climate action. And establish the C R E L that would enable us to explore new innovations. And new opportunities to engage in thoughtful dialogue around emerging energy technologies. C R E L just celebrated its first year anniversary. It has been a year of significant changes in C R E L's leadership. But it has not stopped the growth in our work. We have expanded our partnerships in the community and continue our efforts to expand future workforce preparation opportunities. Through curriculum, through research, technology transfer, workforce development and community education. And I'm so excited that Lori Larkin and Liz Roselle are going to present a few brief remarks. And talk about what we have done this last year.
Thank you, Zach. Good afternoon, Trustee President Agbolog, members of the board, Chancellor Burke and today's board participants. Thank you for this opportunity for us to share information about the California Renewable Energy Laboratory. That serves the Kern Community College District. I am Lori Larkin, the Dean and Lead for the California Renewable Energy Laboratory, better known as C R E L. I'm grateful to Vice President Emeritus and Senior Advisor to the Deputy Chancellor, Liz Roselle. Who brought me on board the project last August. I've asked her to share her insights on the development of C R E L while I provide you with information on recent updates. So on this slide, as you can see, from the Kern Economic Development Corporation's recent statistics. Kern County is ranked the thirteenth oil-producing county in the nation, representing seventy-six percent of California's oil production. In addition to oil and gas, Kern is a geographical renewable energy oasis, featuring the largest U.S. wind energy project. And solar and storage park in addition to the third-largest solar farm, supplying over sixty percent of California's renewable energy. These statistics represent the challenges to and opportunities for an economical energy transition. In Kern Community College District Service Area. On this next slide, consider that there are close to fourteen thousand residents that are directly employed by the oil and gas industry. Many workers will find themselves displaced by the mandates to reach zero carbon emissions and phase out fossil fuels. According to the state of California, Kern County is expected to see a nine percent increase in employment. Over the next ten years as a result of these changes. Currently, Kern County has the largest economy in the San Joaquin Valley. The county also ranks fourth in the nation for STEM jobs due to the area's prevalence of energy. Value-added agriculture, aerospace and defense, healthcare and logistics and warehousing industries. In addition to increases in commercial-scale solar and wind renewable energy generation. Over the last few years, local oil and gas businesses, businesses have been working to scope, develop, permit and open commercially. Viable public management projects in Kern County. Three projects currently in development include the California Resources Corporation Carbon Terror Vault. Carbon Management Institute, Chevron's Carbon Capture and Storage Project near the Kern River East Ridge Co-Generation Plant. And Era Energy's Carbon Frontier. These projects will generate essential job opportunities during the development phases. And sustain employment in ongoing operations. As Kern navigates the effects of transition to clean energy. C R E L is working diligently to create opportunities for our community. To learn about and embrace new developments in clean energy. As well as help build the workforce or upscale worker, workers currently within the oil and gas industry. As well as help build the workforce or upscale worker workers currently within the oil and gas industry. This next slide has a a timeline and you can see that in twenty twenty. Our Bakersfield College President at the time, Dr. Stony Christian. Ramp up efforts to develop an energy initiative to address the impact of clean energy transition on Kern County economics. Although Kern CCD had been in conversations with the National Renewable Energy Laboratory or N R E L. In Golden, Colorado for years, we entered a formal partnership during twenty twenty. The partnership with N R E L helped to support the development of the Energy Technology Transfer and Workforce Development Webinar Series. Which was a mouthful, uh but it is now titled the Agriculture, Water and Energy uh Webinar Series. This led to the establishment of a statewide steering committee. Creation of the Valley Strong Energy Institute. The founding of the Workforce Development Coalition. And eventually the launch of the California Renewable Energy Lab in the fall of twenty twenty two. With guidance from the Steering Committee on overall initiative activities. We focused on developing and providing workforce education. Bakersfield College held their first academic advisory committee meeting comprised of local community. And industry leaders to help raise awareness for STEM majors and shape a modern energy program at Bakersfield College. C R E L has created research opportunities for students related to our C R E L carbon management. And microgrid projects and have begun working with B C's agricultural program. In developing an agrivol takes project at the Delano Campus. As you can see from this timeline, C R E L has been busy. I'm going to hand this over to Laura to expand further on C R E L's goals and activities.
Thank you, Liz. C R E L is an ambitious project. And that is why the state governor, who provided our district with such a significant gift. And our community partners have been so enthusiastic in supporting our mission. Over the last few years, we have experienced leadership changes that has served C R E L in providing a diversity of perspectives. And has allowed C R E L to continue to grow. It is our intent to make sure that our work matches the enthusiasm of our community and industry partners. In realizing C R E L's potential to create educational and training opportunities in sustainable energy. And these opportunities continue to funnel in our district's direction. C R E L's goals in collaboration with our colleges. Include creating centers of excellence that specialize in innovative energy technology. We're educating our community, providing educational and training opportunities. Partnering with four-year institutions to create educational pathways for transfer. Connecting with academia and industry to create coalitions, work experience and internships for our students. Advancing research and innovative developments and identifying viable funding opportunities for our community. One of the main building blocks of our organization is the Planned Centers of Excellence that will not only create. Unique learning opportunities for our students and individual community members. But will also assist industry in supporting the workforce needed to navigate these new technologies. With the assistance of the National Renewable Energy Labs Team of Technical Advisors to provide support in project design. Curriculum development and general expertise. We are creating opportunities for hands-on experiences with the various technologies. The three centers of excellence include California Resource Corporation's Carbon Management Institute. Supported by donation through C R C. Clean Energy and Grid Resilience and Clean Transportation. The Carbon Management Institute includes a post-combustion carbon capture sequestration lab on the Bakersfield College campus. The Clean Energy and Grid Resilience Center includes a battery energy storage system and generator here at the Wile Institute. That will also serve as a mini demonstration project with portable battery storage. And the Clean Transportation Center will include electric vehicle charging stations and electric vehicles. C R C's Carbon Management Institute will also include participation in the California Direct Air Capture Hub. The Clean Energy and Grid Resilience Center is also expanding to offer agrivolt takes at the satellite campus in Delano to complement the regenerative farm. We are also partnering with Advanced Auto Parts and Pro Safety and Rescue. To offer a state-of-the-art electric vehicle training laboratory near Meadows Field. Each of the Centers of Excellence will incorporate student research activities. In fact, B C's STEM students, along with students from business and industrial automation. Have had the opportunity to shape these projects and work with faculty and industry partners. To complete two separate research projects on carbon capture and microgrid resilience. And we will be offering to more opportunities in agrivolt takes and clean transportation in the upcoming spring and summer semesters. In addition. To the research that we've already created for students. D R E L has been supporting the Bakersfield College Valley Strong Energy Institute's Agriculture, Water and Energy Education Series. Broadcasting to over a hundred participants at times. Educating our community on the importance of learning about clean energy and clean energy management. The next webinar will be coming this January on Direct Air Capture or D A C. And the D A C hub, which will include community benefit plans for our community to raise awareness of the clean energy projects coming to Bakersfield. C R E L has also been supporting the Twenty First Century Energy Center's training opportunities that are being offered here at our Wile Institute. Which includes safety, teamwork, communication and technical skills in the fields of solar installation. Electric vehicle infrastructure, microgrid basics, hydrogen fueling infrastructure. Solar sales and entrepreneurship opportunities within the clean energy sector. Although C R E L has been educating the community through the A W webinar series in collaboration with Bakersfield College. This past summer, C R E L also teamed up with the Dolores Huerta Foundation. In building healthy communities to create an interactive forum for members in our disinvested communities to share some of their concerns. And learn about green jobs and educational opportunities. As we are located in an area with a high degree of poverty. A high degree of impact is anticipated, particularly in our rural communities with limited resources. As we move toward compliance with these new federal and state clean energy mandates. This workshop series titled Energy, The Time Is Now. Was offered in both English and Spanish and over a hundred community members earned an energy certificate for attending the four-part series. C R E L in collaboration with Bakersfield College. Assisted in creating an opportunity for students interested in exploring the energy sector to obtain an associate degree in modern energy. In the fall of twenty twenty two, Bakersfield College, with the assistance of the Modern Energy Advisory Committee. Launched the Free Non-Credit Modern Energy Certificate Program. Including topics on carbon capture and storage, energy data analysis and sustainable energy. Students interested in seeking a major within this work. Can even fulfill their lab requirement through Bakersfield College's Energy Science Course Offering, among other four credit course offerings in energy. There are also various elective options, including courses in H VAC, electronics, business and occupational safety and risk management. That are industry leaders endorsed as being critical skills necessary for those students interested in seeking employment within this sector. C R E L also supports students from our academic partners, including U C Riverside. Some of you may have already heard from Paloma Lobos, our previous climate fellow. Who has shared her experience in working with C R E L over these past several months. Not only has she developed her own research project using purple air clean monitors. But has been very successful in connecting with our high school students and getting them interested. And teaching them about the various ways they can get involved and make a difference. Paloma has enjoyed the work so much, in fact, that she has agreed to continue working with our team and supporting other climate fellowships. C R E L is committed to making a difference in our community. Since this summer, we have participated in numerous events and supported our faculty in conferences. Such as those at U C Stanford and U C Davis. We hosted. A group of various K C C D staff involved in our projects for a tour of N R E L's facilities in July. And had the opportunity to see the largest solar farm in the nation at Jack's Solar Farm in Colorado. To summarize C R E L's work, there is much that we are looking forward to continuing to develop over these coming years. As we look for ways to expand learning opportunities within our community. As Kern County continues leading renewable energy production in California. C R E L is proud to serve K C C D to further our impact in the Bakersfield communities and beyond. Our work has been developed through collaborations with national research labs. Such as the National Renewable Energy Lab. And the Livermore Lab Foundation to provide student research opportunities, fellowships, internships and curriculum support. Our unique partnerships with various stakeholders can serve as a model. For expanding to other community colleges across the state. As we partner with the Foundation for the California Community Colleges. And other community colleges in the nation within the National Energy Consortium. In which Kern is serving as the lead for the West Region. C R E L is also working with other colleges and universities such as U C Riverside, U C Berkeley, U C, U C Merced and U C Davis. With advancements in energy curriculum to create educational pathways for transfer. And to meet workforce demands needed to mitigate climate change. In the upcoming year, we will be utilizing C R E L's Innovation Fund to invite faculty projects, activities. And curriculum development related to clean energy policy, impacts and technological advancements. C R E L is creating a student ambassador program for students in all disciplines with an interest in clean energy developments. Faculty will be invited to participate in panels at each of the colleges to explore anticipated impacts of these energy developments on various programs. We are creating financial awards to encourage students, particularly in STEM. To join our efforts in exploring innovations and expanding this work in our community. I want to thank everyone who has made this work possible, including Dr. Christian, Chancellor Burke, Liz Rosell. Dr. Data Boy, Norma Rojas, Nicole Para, our C R E L team, our district colleagues. And our community and industry partners. We encourage you to visit our website if you haven't already and to contact us if you want to learn more. Um, or find out ways that we can get involved. I want to thank the board and Chancellor Burke for allowing us to share the work of C R E L with you today.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of the board on the presentation? Trustee Scriven.
Thank you. I'm thrilled to see the report and hear from you, ladies. What a terrific development this is and and so fitting for our industry. I want to say how proud I am to see how far um you all have taken this. And I want to say that given the uh the service area of Seracosa Community College, I look forward. To scaling this program and making sure that we are are representing these opportunities uh right in the middle of. A region that is so ripe for that. So I I I couldn't miss the opportunity to say that and celebrate how in East Kern. We ho- hold so many distinctions in renewable energy. Um but but I also want to say that. You know, here on the on the west side, we have. Energy companies, they're no longer wedded to specific types of energy. Um, due to legislation, um in California, they have to have a a broad portfolio. And so I understand why we are where we are. I just want to continue to champion that we we make those opportunities available for the area in our region that is is really. Needed needs to have that happen.
Couldn't agree with you more. And thank you for emphasizing that. I really look forward to those partnerships, both with uh Seracosa Porterville and the continued relationship with Bakersfield College. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the comments, questions. Thank you again. Moving on the agenda, seven C, approval of consent items, business services other than construction. Agenda items nine A through nine E, business services, construction agenda items eleven A through eleven F F. Education services, agenda items thirteen A through thirteen C. And human resources agenda items fifteen A through fifteen B. Okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? Here you're seeing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of November ninth, two thousand twenty three. I have a motion by trustee unique, seconded by trustee Corkins, any discussion? Here you're seeing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is letter E, approval of the minutes of the special board, special board meeting of November seventeen, two thousand twenty three. I have a motion by trustee unique, seconded by trustee Corkins, any discussion? Here you're seeing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting on November thirtieth, two thousand twenty three.
Okay.
We have a motion by trustee unique, seconded by Corkins, any discussion on item? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of December fourth, two thousand twenty three.
Someone.
We have a motion by trustee Corkins.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Scriven, any discussion? Here you're seeing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is correspondence of board of trustees and communications. Chancellor Burke.
Yes, um, we see correspondence. At night. Over nineteen vaccination. See correspondence from. Simple. This thing where. Um, at this time, I I've received some questions from board members regarding our COVID nineteen. Parliament. They actually be. Of our. Or us, our policy. And relationship.
Good afternoon. Um, so I was brought here to answer the questions about the COVID vaccine. And so. Um, what we do is we follow our partners, we they drive what we require. So we're guests in their facility. So we have to have. Meet their requirements for our students to go and we meet on a Y N basis that we need. So. Honestly, with COVID, but that last three years, we meet probably every two weeks, phone or text to keep up with the changes that have been going on going. With COVID, um, we still are requiring students, but even though the. Um, federal guidelines have changed that were the state guidelines for the hospital. Some of the hospitals are requiring public, some of them are requiring masking only. But there's not like a general consensus yet. I met with them on November thirtieth, and we're trying to meet again in two weeks to come to the community consensus for the requirements. But as far as now. Since November thirtieth, Cal State Bakersfield and Bakersfield Park will be requiring students to have COVID vaccinations. If they've already had the COVID vaccinations, they're not going to be mandated to get an update. Although probably recommend them by the P D C and California Department of Public Health or healthcare workers. To receive those vaccinations, but we're not requiring that. If they've never been vaccinated at this point, they are requiring you to come back to me. This can change in the next week or two, and I'm hoping it does. Because every semester we always have um speedies that um question that. And rightly so, we we advocate for their personal choices, but you have to understand, they have to understand that. Clinicals, in order to pass nursing, they have clinicals in order to clinicals. They have to follow the health and safety requirements of the community products and produce still ones. Um, the other thing I wanted to say that there was uh some notes in that letter that came out are we're driven by the industry partners requirements. But we are absolutely all about the pocket safety of our students, our staff and our faculty. And in a letter that was written by the community, they questioned that. And as a acute care nurse practitioner, as a registered nurse, actuary nurse. And the director of the nursing program, I'm here to tell you that is my first and foremost concern is the housing. On all of the students and all the industry partners, staff and our patients, particularly those pediatric patients. And the elderly, the young, that's one of the things that has been covered.
Comments or questions from the board? Trustee Carter?
I have a question. Uh, we spoke about this in uh. Earlier board meetings, um. You say that they have to get their clinicals done in and. Now in a hospital or something like that, uh and and they're required by that organization to have them. But it it came up in our conversation, there there may be some that don't require that. Is is there a way? That we could funnel the prospective students that don't. Uh, want to get the COVID shot for those facilities that don't require it so that we aren't. In a blanket requirement and um forcing a uh some kind of a. Of a. A situation on a person that doesn't want it.
First, first of all, all students. First, first of all, all students can um request an exemption from it. And if they do that, they have to meet and commit, they accept that. The difficult part about that, we have over six hundred students in the hospitals and clinical spaces are um tight. And then each of the students are required by the Board of Registered Nursing to rotate through different areas. They can compare, they can serve, they can be pediatric, they can. Um, and so they have to have so many different types of experiences. And I did try one semester to do just that, where we said, okay, if you're not go, if you're not going to be vaccinated, we'll try to do that. But it was really a nightmare. And we had to shift students that were vaccinated from experience that they were assigned to accommodate the proof that they're not. And it's not just that we're removing students from one facility to another. It is um multifaceted and it creates a lot of problems. So the other thing that happens when students do, um, I actually have guidance for them right now that are that have chosen not to become vaccinated. I meet with them. I tell them that, you know, right at front, the better registered nursing station must complete nine hundred and seventy-six hours in these areas of specialty. The faculty don't, and each facility doesn't offer every specialty or every area of clinical rotation. So if you get to a point where you get into third semester and you're not able to go to Peds because you're assigned to a program that has has pediatric uh students and they require that, or they have pediatric experience that they require. That I can't do anything about that. The hospital requires that. So they may not be able to hook your ass and persist throughout the program. And they know that going in. I do try to um, you know, try to accommodate them and move them as I can. But it's not that you you can all those students and the limited patients we have. You can real, you can only have like three to five students in some areas. Some areas we can have seven, some ten, but you're you're constantly having to manipulate your hand to the speed. And it's not always positive. Or they they're not vaccinated. They don't want to go to the P and shit. I only want to do days. So I feel the want to move somebody that has been on the schedule and having time daycare and, you know, all that stuff can be moved. So it's a difficult situation. I'm hoping it will um kind of go away here in the near future. We're back to requirements in the hospital. But right now, that we're not sticking COVID in both the long-term care facilities and acute care facilities, my long-term care facilities do require all those students to have COVID vaccinations, updates, and testing for as they enter the clinical facility each and every day. But acute care, some are just requiring masks, some are requiring vaccination. Um, several of them are kind of waiting to find out what their leadership is telling them. So it's right now kind of in the middle.
Any other comments, questions?
Uh, I really appreciate your approach. I think it's it's really, you know, intentional and and focused on success of the students. I think that's the key here is understanding where we have uh latitude to interpret our portion of 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 the this decision and and where we need to set our students up for success in the program that that you're you're clearly articulating here. So I just am pleased to see that that's what's guiding our decision-making, that we are creating um these these uh these decisions and processes and policies around the healthcare partners um that are the eventual eventual employers and and a key part of the training. So I as long as we're continuing to do that and and dialogue with our our partners and industry and um not making uh premature decisions before we have to about what we're requiring our students to do. I think that is is the right direction. And so I appreciate your update today, and I think this is important. And I I think we do need to stay tuned because I think this is a shifting um target, you know, about what what is standard, what is expected, and and what we're going to have in six months from now or right now during flu season or in in nine months from now. So I think the more broad we can be about um, you know, people's decision-making until they have to make that decision, but not setting our students up to be unsuccessful. Um, I I think that's that's a a a tension we're looking at, but I think you're doing an intentional job there and appreciate it.
Thank you. Our partners are definitely an integral job, a piece of what we do, and we couldn't do what we do. We're going to bless this community with um communication and the support from our community partners. So we we work tirelessly together, especially as the last few years is trying to change. So it's um really tight.
And reinforcing that that at the at the college level and at the workforce level, there are exemptions available, I think, is key as we navigate this.
I just wanted to say to you, because you had mentioned it earlier, that um that we graduated ninety-one students a couple of days ago, and we're graduating fifty. And so we're we're taking in more students each time. We have over four hundred. And we aren't comfortable alone. And so we are trying to meet that and fill those gaps that are there. So.
Well, I know you are, and I know we are as as a as a community and as an organization. I I I'm so grateful for that. I hope that my comments were more about our our interest as a society to face the reality that we have, we have to make um this a priority to to educate the students where the facilities have the ability to do that and not work against ourselves by limiting those opportunities.
So did I hear you right? You have four hundred students and only five that are not wanting to to get the vaccine?
Yeah, so I think we have three just graduated. But I could get three like that. It seems like it'd be easy to place a better. Um, but we've made it work. I mean, we graduated two and we started three. We're going to, we will shift if we can until the hospitals. I don't see any problem right now. I think we have our specialties are the biggest.
Thank you for your efforts.
There are the comments, questions from members of the board?
Thank you, Carl.
We'll move on. Letter I, second reading and adoption, proposed revisions to the current community college district board policy, chapter one, eleven hundred description of the current community college district. Second, we have a motion by trustee unique, seconded by trustee Corkins, any questions or comments on this item? Here you're seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next is the first reading of the proposed revisions to the current community college district board policy, chapter two, the items for information only, any questions? We'll move on to K, presentation of the three eleven Q financial status report, C C F S, for the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-two. This is for informational purposes only. Any questions, I may as well touch this. There are no questions, we'll move on to the next item, L. Presentation of the current community college district budget development calendar for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. That is also for information only, any questions? If there are none, we'll move on to eight, business services approval other than construction, letter A. Authorization for the chief financial officer to enter into an agreement between the current community college district on behalf of the California Renewable Energy Laboratory and the city of Bakersfield to develop specific action plans to facilitate the research Sign Watts, Inc., photo will take in electric vehicle technology for educational and training purposes. The term is from January first, two thousand twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. The amount payable to the district is not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars to be deposited into the R P zero four zero restricted program fund.
Who approve?
Second, we have a motion by trustee Corkin, seconded by trustee Jimenez, and questions or comments? Trustee Card?
I think it was this one that had in the contract, this was the city of Bakersfield, right? They had in the contract where it was uh a ten-day decision by either party. Does that kind of stick us in a terrible position if we're getting into this and gearing up for spending money and then they tried to back out? Is that, do I read that right?
Let CFO, I check.
Yeah, so typically we have either thirty or forty-five day, uh even up to sixty day notices for most of our contracts. However, given that the the city of Bakersfield is contracting out with uh, well, it says a company here, but it's primarily an individual. Um, they didn't want to be held into a contract longer if that person was the back out of their end of the contract with us. Um, we've assessed the risk of what that could entail. Um, we believe that the risk is very minimal uh from from a uh from an expense side, if we were to to jump out in front of this. Uh, well, because we're primarily relying upon that person to be doing the spending anyways. So if that person was the back out of the contract with the city, we would know about it before it was, they would, we, before they would notify us.
I would also add that any work that's done under the scope of a contract would be qualified. Trustee.
But it gets funded before we spend the money.
No, well, it will be. Um, we will bill after services are performed, but once services are performed, they will owe us the money.
Yeah, the comments or questions?
We have a motion. Is that, isn't that something that could have been negotiated at ten days?
Uh, at times it is. Um, in this, in this situation, the city was fairly um fairly set on on the ten day. Um, that's where we we did an internal assessment on whether we felt that there was a a risk financially uh for the district. And you determined that there was not a significant risk.
We have a motion in a second on the floor. This is a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to letter B, authorization of the chief financial officer to execute a service agreement between the current community college district and Watermark Insights LLC for evaluation services. The term is from January first, two thousand twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. The cost of the district does not exceed one hundred fifty-five thousand, ninety-two dollars and seventeen cents to be paid from the Q zero zero one unrestricted fund.
True.
We have a motion by trustee Corkins, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Jimenez, any questions or comments on the item? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to letter C, authorization for the chief financial officer to enter into a jurisdictional exchange agreement between the current community college district and California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office on behalf of the California Community Colleges Board of Governors for Anthony Cordova to function as a visiting vice chancellor for the chancellor's office. The term is from December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three through December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. The district will be reimbursed up to three hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars to be deposited in G U zero zero one unrestricted fund.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by trustee Jimenez, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Corkins, any discussion on the item?
Exactly.
Um, what's his role going to be? He he's going to be taking over uh some workforce and economic economic development work for the state chancellor's office that um spread kind of the work throughout all the community colleges rather than it being localized in certain areas to try to drive the um the governor's objectives of trying to get more uh Californians trained in the workforce and economic areas.
He's going to be back for a position of. That's several.
Is is this unique because of our relationship to the the state chancellor's office? Because I because I noticed that this is not the first time we've kind of had this shared resource approach to our staff, which I'm not opposed to, I think in many ways it provides connectivity, but it's definitely um, I I I appreciate kind of understanding. I think this is like the third or fourth.
Yes. The the chancellor's office historically has reached out to all these districts for years to have to temporarily essentially borrow employees that have certain. So, um, no, this is not unusual. But might be the the reason we're seeing an uptick here in our district is uh have the new state chancellor has a lot of our staff to seize opportunities to bring that expertise. Stay. I agree with you. I think it's a benefit for our district because there's this greater well, as these these individuals will actually um learn quite a bit. Stay. So I think it's a win-win. It's an opportunity. Obviously, you know.
Thank you. But I appreciate that understanding because I I as I've seen these come through, I've I've wondered kind of what our what our posture is. Are we losing anything here in terms of the resource for our on-the-ground efforts? Um, but I I think that the the reimbursement and keeping us whole is key. And if if it's like of a temporary nature, I do believe there's some cross-training and value.
There's also a percentage stays with current. These aren't a hundred percent. So that that gives us the opportunity for uh former or the case ACD employee to assist us on certain projects that they will be. Craig Hayward is also also entered into he's helping us with I I I E P. Grant. Actually. Coming back next week to assist us. I E P.
The others. The CNNs.
Are we planning on replacing those positions and what happens when those people persons come back to our district at the end of?
So we usually do an interim.
Okay.
Um, and then the interim. But then just go back.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? All right. So remind me, we have a motion.
Second, we need to.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We'll move on to letter D, authorization of the chief financial officer to enter into an agreement between the current community college district and regions of the University of California on behalf of UC Merced for work on California jobs first planning phase one, R F P thirteen dash one five. The term is December first, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Cost of the district is two hundred eighty-two thousand to be paid from the R P six one seven restricted program.
Who approve?
We have a motion by trustee Gomez Heitzberg, seconded by trustee Corkins. Any questions? On this item, here you're seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to ten, business services approval, construction items. A, authorization for the chief financial officer to execute a revised service work authorization number nine between the current community college district on behalf of Bakersfield College and A E Com for project management services with the Bakersfield College Combined Gymnasium and Fieldhouse Project. The term is per the master agreement. This revised work authorization will extend services from January first, two thousand twenty-four through September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four and increases the original work authorization by three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and forty cents from two million fifty thousand to for a total revised uh cost to the district not to exceed two million four hundred four thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and forty cents to be paid from the M J one hundred local capital outlay fund.
Hello.
We have a motion approved by trustee Corkin, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by trustee Gomez Heitzberg. Any questions or discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is B, authorization for the chief financial officer to execute a service work authorization between the current community college district on behalf of Bakersfield College and A E Com for construction program management services for the Bakersfield College Measure J Bond Projects. Term is from January first, two thousand twenty-four through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Cost of the district is not to exceed eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, eight hundred sixteen thousand thirty dollars to in twenty-one seconds to be paid from the M J one hundred local capital outlay fund. Sorry.
Who approve?
Again.
Motion by trustee Corkin, seconded by trustee Scriber, any questions on the item? Here you're seeing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is letter C, authorization for the chief financial officer to execute an amendment for the current community college district on behalf of Bakersfield College and A E Com to the master agreement for construction program management services for the Bakersfield College Measure J Bond Program. This amendment will extend the agreement from October first, two thousand twenty-three through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. There's no cost to the district.
Someone.
Again.
We have a motion approved by trustee Corkin, seconded by trustee Scriber, questions or discussion? Here you're seeing that, all in favor? Here you're seeing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is letter D. Authorization for the chief financial officer to enter into a construction agreement between the current community college district on behalf of Porterville College and Core Business Interiors for the Porterville College Allied Health F X E project. The term is from December thirteenth, two thousand twenty three through April thirtieth, two thousand twenty four. Cost of the district does not succeed seven hundred ninety eight thousand sixteen dollars thirty four cents to be paid from the M J one hundred local capital outlet.
Someone.
Have a motion approved by trustee Quorkin, seconded by trustee Me. Any questions or discussion on this item? Here you're seeing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is letter E. Authorization for the chief financial officer to execute a work authorization between the current committee calls district on behalf of Bakersfield College and one nine six architects for the Bakersfield College Combined Gymnasium and Fieldhouse Pool Building Space One Project. Term is per the master agreement. The cost of the district does not succeed four hundred ninety seven thousand three hundred and seventy dollars to be paid from the M J one hundred local capital outlet fund.
Someone.
Have a motion approved by trustee Quorkins, their second. Seconded by trustee Me. Any questions or discussion on item? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is twelve, education services approval letter A. Approval of the attached curriculum reports and courses program certificates, a new community service education course offerings as part of the district's curriculum for Bakersfield College, Saracose Community College and Porterville. Have a motion approved by trustee Gomez Heitzberg.
Again.
Seconded by trustee Jimenez. Any questions or discussion on item? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We'll move on to letter B. Authorization for the chief financial officer to execute a grant agreement between the current community college district on behalf of Porterville College and the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office on behalf of the California Community Colleges Board of Governors to support the mathematics, engineering and science achievement or Mesa program. The purpose of the grant is to provide academic and support services for economically and educationally disadvantaged students who seek to transfer the four-year institution. Term of this grant shall be from July twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three, from July thirty first of two thousand twenty seven. The amount payable to the district is one million one hundred and twenty thousand dollars be deposited into a restricted program fund to be determined. We have a motion by trustee Me, seconded by trustee Quorkins. Any discussion on item? Here you're seeing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next is letter C. Authorization for the chief financial officer to accept a grants between the current community college district on behalf of Bakersfield College and California Student Aid Commission to create a new contract for two thousand twenty three, twenty four academic year funding. The term of the contract is from November first, two thousand twenty three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty four. The amount payable to the district does not succeed four hundred and twenty six thousand nine hundred and forty nine dollars seventy four cents to be deposited into the R P six five nine restricted program.
Someone.
We have a motion by trustee Quorkins is their second. Seconded by trustee Me. Any questions or discussion on item? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to letter D. Authorization for the chief financial officer to execute agreements between the current community college district as the Central Valley Motherlode Regional Consortium Fiscal Agent and the Regional Consortium of Community College Districts as sub-grantees for the execution of regionally aligned economic and workforce development initiatives. The term is from July first, two thousand twenty three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. The amount payable to the district fourteen million one hundred twenty three thousand eighty two dollars to be deposited into the R P six seven six restricted program fund. The amount payable to the sub-grantee community college districts is in the amount of twelve million four thousand six hundred and twenty dollars to be paid from the R P six seven six restricted program.
Hello. Second.
And approved by trustee Gomez Heitzberg is their second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Jimenez. Any questions or discussion on item?
Please that we are maintaining our joint plan.
Very good. For the others. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. That brings us to letter E. Authorization for the chief financial officer to accept a grant between the current community college district on behalf of Porterville College and the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office on behalf of the California Community Colleges Board of Governors for the Umuich Campus Program. Term is from June first, two thousand twenty three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. The amount payable to the district is one hundred fifty eight thousand nine hundred four dollars and eighty cents to be deposited into a restricted program fund to be determined.
Motion to approve.
We have a time for a motion.
Second, now the second.
Of a motion by trustee Quorkin, seconded by trustee Jimenez. Any discussion on item? Here you're seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. That brings us to F. Authorization for the chief financial officer to enter into a subcontract agreement between the current community college district on behalf of Bakersfield College and Community Action Partnership of Kern for an early head start program. Term is from September first, two thousand twenty three through August thirty first, two thousand twenty eight. Contract with a labeled payment for services to be seven hundred twenty three dollars and twenty four cents per child per calendar month up to a maximum of thirty two early head start children. The amount payable to the district does not succeed one million three hundred and eighty eight thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and eighty cents to be deposited into the C D zero one one restricted program fund.
Hello.
We have a motion by trustee Gomez Heitzberg.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Jimenez. With questions or discussion on item? Here you're seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item, authorization for the chief financial officer to accept a grant between the current community college district on behalf of Bakersfield College and the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office on behalf of the California Community Colleges Board of Governors to collaborate with High Roads Construction Careers Partner Members to build credit for prior learning infrastructure. The term is from September twenty sixth, two thousand twenty three through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. The amount payable to the district is four hundred and forty seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to be deposited into the R P two eighty two restricted program fund. We have a motion to approve my trustee Me, seconded by trustee Quorkins. Any comments, any questions or comments on the item? Here you're seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, H, authorization for the chief financial officer to execute a memorandum of understanding between the current community college district on behalf of Saracose Community College and Controlled Response Institute for Constructional Services. The term of the agreements is from the date both parties sign it through August thirty first, two thousand twenty eight. The cost of the district shall not exceed one hundred, one million two hundred thousand to be paid from the G U zero zero one general unrestricted fund.
Um.
We have a motion by trustee Quorkin, seconded by trustee Me. Any questions on that item? Here you're seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next item is letter I. Approval of intense for the chief financial officer to execute and submit the continued funding application to automatically renew the contract for fiscal year two thousand twenty four, twenty five for the General Childcare and Development Infant Toddler Program. The program currently provides services to children and families who reside in the current community college district service area serving students of Bakersfield College and Saracose Community College, along with community members among our four sites.
Hello.
We have a motion to approve by trustee Gomez Heitzberg is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Jimenez. Any discussion on item? Here you're seeing none, this requires a roll call vote. Jennifer Lee, pull the board, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Moving on to fourteen, human resources approval letter A. Discuss to take appropriate action on the employment agreement for the incoming chancellor. This item fourteen A includes a recommendation to approve the appointment agreement of the current community college district chancellor. The term of the agreement is from March first, two thousand twenty four through March first, two thousand twenty seven. The salary is three hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year. It includes the same health and welfare benefits, holidays and leaves as other management employees. There's also a typo on the contract that is listed in board docs. The date under compensation is listed as March first, two thousand twenty three. Actually, that change should be March first, two thousand twenty four. That change has been communicated to the incoming chancellor, who is okay with the amendment on that agreement. So we will make sure we change that typo. So with that, are there any questions or comments on this particular item? We have a motion then to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Gomez Heitzberg. Any further discussion or questions on the item? There are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion. Especially.
Aye. Our change. I have sat in that role. Thank you, my honor.
Thank you. So we'll move on to committee ad hoc committee reports and report of foundation activities by trustee Leesons, letter A. We have board officer nomination could be reports of the board. Very good. So we'll move on to reports. Letter A, facilities report links. Are there any questions on the facility report links that we provided in advance? There are none, we'll move on to faculty reports.
Good afternoon. I'm Eric Manchaca, the academic senate president at Bakersfield College. I submitted a written report just to highlight a couple of items. Uh, we had myself, the vice president of getting a summit and Lisa Harding go to the A S triple C um plenary. So that's like the state senate. And we went there to learn more and also learn about those legislative updates that we heard earlier. We had a budget forum that our budget co-chair co-chairs, uh, vice president you and then the faculty Stephen Holmes shared and we had president walk in there. So thank you. That was a good dialogue. Uh, the faculty in senate also participated in some of the searches for both the president and the chancellor. And discussions were centered around benefits and concerns with the confidential nature of the chancellor search. Last week was the last week of the semester and we'll resume again the second week of January. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
The other faculty reports. We'll move on to classified reports.
Thank you, trustees, President Agbolog and Chancellor Burke. Uh, just to remind everybody, I'm Chris Blazer. I'm the C S C A chapter president for chapter three, three, six for Bakersfield College and the district office. Recently, the C S C A chapter three, three, six executive board has been really diligently working to update our chapter's constitution and bylaws um and prepare for the upcoming negotiations of our full collective bargaining agreement uh, starting at the beginning of next year, fingers crossed. Uh, we've hosted several working sessions with our group that have brought our chapter leadership together to dig really deep into this work. I'm incredibly very grateful to be able to collaborate with such talented, insightful and dedicated classified leadership. I want to extend a big congratulations to the board in their selection of our next chancellor. That process is always intense and a little lengthy and can at times be a little bit uncertain. Um, I've received lots of positive feedback from our classified members already. And the general consensus seems to be that members are confident that the process was thoughtful and thorough. We're hoping that the process sets up K C C D for many great things for many, many years to come. I'd like to thank trustee Gomez Heitzberg for her graceful leadership on that screening committee. C S C A would like to welcome Dr. Steven Bloomberg back to K C C D. There seems to be something nice about coming full circle. We're excited to get to work with him in two thousand and twenty twenty. For this month's, we are a central classified professional highlight. C S C A chapter three, three, six would like to honor Alex Broom. She is the executive secretary for B C's health and physical education and athletics areas. She is the true epitome of advancement within our district. Alex started her K C C D journey back in two thousand fifteen as a department assistant two became a department assistant three in two thousand seventeen and an executive secretary in two thousand twenty one. For those that know Alex, she goes beyond her work duties to support the coaches and her administrators. She's always been known to lend an ear to our student athletes. And many see her as a mother figure and come to her for advice with their academic studies, advice on sports and just general life experience. On top of that, Alex is very organized and professional, allowing her to deliver the best quality college education experience to the athletic department and B C really as a whole. On more than one occasion, I have been fortunate to witness Alex handle and navigate competing interests interests with poise and with grace. She rarely complains, even when immense challenges every doorstep. There is no doubt in my mind that this contributes to her character and to the wonderful person that she is. Alex truly sets the standard of the model classified professional and we're extremely grateful that she is part of B C's B C and K C C D family. So congratulations goes out to Alex. With that, um, here at K C C D, I just want to mention that we work really hard and we take immense pride in our dedication to that work. Yet we very much remain grateful for even simple things like a two-week operational closure. That opportunity affords all K C C D staff a chance to reset and realign. So I just wanted to say to everybody, please take advantage of that time. I'd like to wish the board, the K C C D leadership and staff and all classified professionals a restful closure and joyous holidays. We're really looking forward to a lot of the amazing, amazing things that will happen in two thousand twenty four. Thank you all. Thank you. And a short report.
Good afternoon, trustees, chancellor. I'm willing to steal the president of the current community college district management association. And I'm here today to talk to a little bit about what things have happened over the last month or so. Um, the toolkit is making good progress and we expect it to be available in spring of two thousand twenty four. Um, we've heard from our constituents regarding the scheduling of the symposium and we are making some adjustments there. We'll be getting back to you all with a revised date on that. It will still be, uh, held at the B C campus Renegade Event Center. We're very grateful for that wonderful location. The professional development lunch and learn sessions are happening and they're on December fourteenth. We're pleased to have, uh, Vice Chancellor Abe Ali talking to us, talking to us about the top five things managers can do to empower their staff, which is going to be a very good session. And finally, it is my pleasure to recognize our December manager of the month, Catherine, or Katie um Bachman. She is the dean of enrollment and retention for the Saracose Community College. And she is absolutely wonderful. Kind of the pleasure of having her sit on our board for several months and we have enjoyed her support at and planning our symposium symposium. The nomination of for Katie, this, this time for manager of the month was made by Vice President Ostash. And she really wants to call out Katie's work in, over the past five years where she built from the ground up the outreach department across their eighteen thousand square mile service area and four different campus locations as well as their online coursework. She started out as the sole person in that department and has since. She started out as the sole person in that department and has since built an active thriving department that has helped maintain. Enrollment throughout COVID nineteen and department and continues to grow and gain enrollment in the post COVID era. Not only does she bring students to Saracose, she ensures that they persist and complete. In addition to her primary role, she's also developed their local promise program and the college's basic needs program. Truly an outstanding and exemplary work. Uh, for a very rural communities that needs this type of support. She has in fact, uh, grown the program from a handful to over one hundred actively engaged from a students. Really an incredible amount of work. Vice President Ostash reminds us, these are just a few of, uh, the highlights of the work that Katie has done. And on the recommendation of Vice President Ostash and in recognition. Of her extensive work, innovation, leadership and passion. The current community college district management association recognizes Katie Bachmann. As it's December twenty twenty three manager of the month. And I don't know if she's watching, but could we all give her a round of applause please? And that will conclude my report, thank you so much.
Thank you. Move on to college reports.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, President Agbalog and Chancellor Burke. You have my report. I would like to just say it was really good to see me and you at, at a recent events over the last few months. I'll share a few with you. That's not in, in my report. Um, on November thirtieth, biggest for college program for our new agricultural sciences building. And very thankful to measure J for what we see for that. Uh, enjoy to have Chancellor Burke, trustee Agbalog, trustee Gomez Heitzberg, thank you. Pastor Shapiro. And trustee him and his in attendance and so have an awesome in this area, thank you all for attending. Um, the B C Foundation annual board holiday dinner was a festive celebration and. Was great to have trustee Happy Glock with us that evening as well, so I would thank you for attending. Last week, the B C physical therapy program hitting milestone with his first graduating cohort. All thirteen graduates at one or more job offers. Which is a testament to the high demand need that B C is preparing our students for. Uh, my wife had knee replacement surgery and I took it at their, the therapy and. Lo and behold, there was a B C student taking care of her, so I really was proud about that. I'm very happy and proud of this program. Fall semester has been packed with activities and celebrations and one of my favorite was the homecoming. What's our? Bringing back our alumni barbecue and the football game. I was amazed of just the, how our football players prepare for a football game. And how they juggle their academics and also prepare for the games and so I. That is firsthand look when I went to Santa Barbara and I was on the field and. Boy, it was a lot, it's a lot of work preparing for a football game and so I want to applaud our athletes. Our football team had a season record of six and five. And so I want to say congratulations to them as well. Going closing, the coming year holds a great promise, new opportunities, new leadership. Fresh initiatives and continued success for all of the colleges and the district. The biggest for college, I am tremendously thankful for the dedication of all of our classified staff. Faculty and our management team. It's because of our hard work together that we have supported our students throughout this year. I wanted to say thank you trustees and Chancellor Burke. And may this holiday seem to be a time of joy, warmth and connection for us. With all of our loved ones, I wish everyone a great winter break and happy holidays. Thank you for driving.
President Agbalog, Chancellor Burke, trustees. Um, you have my report, as you can see from that report, uh, Saracose has been very busy over the last month. Um, couple of things I just wanted to add, first of all, congratulations to the board and to the district for having, um, selected our next chancellor, I look forward to welcoming Dr. Bloomberg. Um, when he, um, comes to us in March. Um, I'm, I'm encouraged, uh, I'm personally encouraged a little selfishly that he has a connection with Saracose Community College, so. Um, look forward to meeting me. In person. Um, it's official, Saracose enrollment and F T S for fall twenty twenty three now exceeds that of fall two thousand and eighteen. So we finally got there, so I'm excited about that news as well and, um. Lastly, I just really wanted to highlight last Thursday, um. Former current community college district chancellor, Dr. Sonya Christian, now state chancellor. Uh, joined us last Thursday for a, um, graduation ceremony at the California, um. Um, correction institute known as C C I, um, where we celebrated over thirty students achievement in, in, um. Achieving their degrees. So she was there, I was looking forward to a big press releases result of her being there. To bring some great attention and thank to this wonderful program, the success of this program, Saracose offers and. Um, I was just really happy to have her there, um, and have going in that celebration. Uh, other than that, I just want to wish everyone a very happy holiday.
Good afternoon, Chancellor Burke, trustees. Um, you receive my P C update and you'll see some highlights of the activities that happen on campus. That not only celebrate but also support our students. Especially, uh, our Latino students with the quentin program. And our African American students with the emoji program, so please take a look at those stories. Um, also, there's a little bit of an update on the facilities master plan and the activities to launch that process. And also a forum that we held. Uh, I'm proud to say all the, the leaders, the governance leaders at P C, we held a forum. Just to increase communication, uh, on campus and provide an update from each one of our perspectives to our constituency, so that, that was great. To have the academic senate president, um, our student, um, body president and, um. C A president as well. Um, I also like to add to the earlier conversation, uh, with the presentation from Mark McDonald regarding ally health or nursing in particular. And share with you that P C is well poised to help in that regard. Um, as I had reported before, we doubled the nursing program in anticipation to the new building, so that is going really well. Um. And continues to be a challenge to have the clinicals. Uh, but we expanded that program and I also like to highlight that we have a. Collaboration with national university and national takes the credits from P C. And very quickly our students can earn a bachelor's in nursing. I'll also like to highlight in our area of ally health, which is site tech. The demand is tremendous and, um. We are poised to, um, increase the number of students inside tech. Our collaboration with the P D C, the Porterville Developmental Center. They are asking us to increase the number of students and receive students every semester. We typically have, uh, a cohort per year, so we ran two cohorts kind of overlapping. We're hoping to add one more, so we will have new cohorts. Basically three cohorts overlapping and, and I make emphasis because again, it is very challenging to find the places for the clinicals that we're working through that. I give a lot of credit to our dean of ally health, Kim Behrens. Um, and our V P I, uh, that Russell, they're working through an M O U to make this possible. Um, P D C is willing to actually fund a couple faculty positions that could make this possible. We also have or we're working on a collaboration with Grand Canyon University. And they will give credit again to our students inside tech, so they can earn a bachelor's in, in like. Psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner, um, very quickly as well. Um, so as you can hear, uh, we're well poised to respond to that need in the community. However, uh, I also want to share that on a phone call on November third. The site tech board, um, gave us until this spring, mid spring to, to prove that we can. Um, that we have the resources to build the capacity, so. We're working in, uh, with that and with our partners like P D C, but we need additional technicians, we need a director. So you know, with the growth, there comes other, uh, expansion that, that we need to respond to. So, but we're very excited about that and I wanted to share that. That concludes my report and happy holidays.
Thank you. Chancellor's report.
Thank you, my report is attached to the board agenda, the chancellor's update for the month of November. It was extremely busy. And as well as the, uh, monthly, uh, summary of the news coverage for, um. District as well as our three colleges. Um, very quickly, I'd like to congratulate, um. Katie, Katie Bachman for being named. One. As well as, uh, congratulate Alex Broom. For. Um, I. Happily report, I've, uh, met with, uh, incoming chancellor. Doctor Steven Bloomberg, uh, this week have begun the process of transitioning. And we will be continuing that process over the course of the next two months. Uh, I will be setting up, uh, meetings with internal stakeholders as well as external stakeholders for him to start. Familiarizing him with the internal community as well as the extra. And report. Uh, Dr. Bloomberg is, is greatly honored for the sports. Appointment of him as the next chancellor of this district. He's very excited to get to work since three colleges and. With that, I will wish everybody happy holidays. Please get some rest, enjoy, pause your break. And Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Chancellor Burke. That brings us to trustees reports and increase at the beginning. Student trustee Boozman. Rest in spirit.
We're just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and just wishing everyone a beautiful holiday season.
Resting.
Happy holidays.
Trustee Gorgons. Trustee Evans.
I just want to highlight the biggest girl college rank, ranked eleven by the Hispanic outlook mag- magazine. As a big, as a college that, that works the greatest. Amounts of awards to Hispanic students, so I think that's a huge accomplishment. I think there's a hundred universities in that, in college in that list and we're ranked number eleven, so that's. Great that shows our dedication to serving all students. And also, I want to stand my thank you to trustee Gomez Hasberg for leading the search committee for the chapter search. And I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Carter.
Just want to say happy holidays and enjoy vacation.
Trustee Gomez Heitzberg.
Well, it sounded like I did the screening committee all by myself, but, um. I want to thank, uh, the members of the screening committee, many, I see in this room because they're leaders within their. Their constituency groups, so classified professionals, faculty. Management and community members from across this district were very thoughtful, very generous with their time, as Kate. Uh, Meek said, this is not a fast process. But I think that indicates that it's a thoughtful process. And, um, I think we're all looking forward to, uh, Dr. Bloomberg joining us and I buy invite. Community members who may be in the audience today, all of the employees. To welcome and support Dr. Bloomberg and his success because his success will be our success. So, um, in the spirit of the holidays, peace and joy to everyone.
Thank you, trustee Gomez Heitzberg, I'll conclude by. Also, thank you trustee Gomez Heitzberg and the chancellor selection committee for all their hard work and for. Bringing forward a qualified list of candidates for the board of trustees to consider. I want to congratulate Dr. Bloomberg on his appointment, look forward to working with him. And also would like to take a moment to thank trustee, or I'm sorry. Promoting your maybe downgrade you interim chancellor, uh, Burke for his service to our district. Um, as interim chancellor, and we appreciate all of your services to, to the board and to the district. Um, I also, excuse me, want to thank my colleagues on the board for allowing me to serve as their board president in the last three years. It's been an honor and a privilege to do just that. I'm stepping off now and handing the reins over to, uh, uh. Incoming president, uh, Corkins. And I know that, uh, my departure is probably a source of joy for some people, but I think that, uh. Trustee Corkins where the board will be in good hands under his leadership. And lastly, excuse me. I want to take this moment, you know, as kind of last act as outgoing president and make a formal referral. To staff to work with the finance committee. Uh, Chancellor Burke and I have been in conversations regarding some items of concern that we've had with respect to some invoices. And would like to have the, uh, finance committee take a look at those items for us. With that, uh, Merry Christmas.
And, and I was remin, like joking earlier.
It's a second same.
Good, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Romeo, for your dedication.
Thank you, thank you all. So with that, uh, we'll go ahead and turn the, uh, meeting. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy new year, please be safe with your families and enjoy your time off.